Let's call this to order. Good evening, everyone.
We're very enthusiastic over here.
Oh, great. Karen, do we have a attendant? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent?
So move.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Great. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Karen, do we have any citizens' comments for tonight? Great, Scott, can you come on up, please?
Do you want to do it in front?
I meant to start up at the end.
Oh, for the end, okay. Great. Okay, great. So, moving on to financial reports with Josie, please.
Thank you. And financial reports began on page thirteen and go through seventeen. And this is a continuation from last month when we met and you had quarters worth of financial reports. So this follows through and shows you your cash. Your tax receipt says of October thirty-first, it's ninety-five point four percent of what's expected. And your fund balance activity, and there is an agenda item regarding fund balance this evening. That's a recommendation that the auditorship made about moving money from the fund balance to the capital fund. So that's part of this evening's agenda. And the narrative talks about the revenue, your tax receipts, and the expenditures, what the pre-pays have been. The total cash expended through October equals five million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand and thirty-four dollars. The revenue over/under, we are fine. Thirty-three point eight percent of budget at this point in time is pretty close to where we expect to be. The two grants that are being carried forward are listed down below, so you can see those. And then on page fifteen is the statement of revenues, expenditures, with changes. It includes the column with the year-to-date percentages that we showed that we were adding to our financial reports to try to indicate where we were looking in the year. If there are any questions about the financial reports, I will do my best. Through seventeen, where the balance sheet is.
I have a quick question on the narrative. Negative revenue for the month of October in library fines, fees, and others is a result of reclassification. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Reclassification is, at some point in the process of classifying an expenditure in the documentation, the software we use, we put it in the wrong place. And so it was, we reclassified it so that we could get it to balance.
Okay. Is that shown in any particular line on page, on any of these three pages?
It probably is, Colleen.
Okay. No, no sweat. I was just looking.
Yep, it probably is. And after the meeting, I can ask someone else.
No, no sweat.
Okay.
Great. Any questions for Josie? On the financial review summary? No questions? All right, great. Moving on, thank you.
Thank you.
Executive committee, we met prior to the meeting tonight. It was just Karine and I. Trustee Leah has out for the evening. And we just reviewed a couple of things that have happened since we last met. We talked a little bit about the staff day this past Monday and how that went. I was, I couldn't make it, so it was really nice to hear that everyone was able to make it in the snowstorm. So kudos to the library for committing to coming through on that day. That was a tough day to travel, or not travel, you were here all day.
I'm here all day.
Right. And we also talked about, a little bit about what we'll be reviewing later tonight, which is us coming out of closed session and the feasibility study. So we did a quick review of that. What else did we cover, Karine? That was a, it was a quick, kind of, meeting. I think a little bit about strategic plan coming up for end of year. Trying to figure out just end of year work before we meet again next month.
Right.
So, like, did we miss, did I miss anything?
Nope.
Great. So, executive committee, moving on to budget and finance committee.
We met on Halloween and it was very scary. Victoria and I met with Dave and it's Dan, Don, yeah, Don, Dan, from Yo and Yo. And they gave us a preview on what we're going to hear from Dave this evening. We also talked at length about a very generous gift from the Ladies Library Association. Do you want to talk about that, or?
You're asking me?
Yeah, it was a.
Yes, I can. The library has been talking to the ladies for about six months about a gift that would be a significant one from them to help fund the addition of a screen in the lobby that is a digital screen that would, could run seventy-two hours a week without being, without going off, without turning off. The screen could be used for digital art exhibitions that are local, as well as international and national, and could also, would also be used when we have speakers or events up behind that speaker or event so that people could see. And it could be internal promotion to anyone in the library about what's coming up, pretty much the way you see this. The screen that we are talking about is a half-a-million-dollar screen. And so we spoke with the Ladies Library Association about a quarter of a million dollars in donation. And they agreed. They thought it was a great idea, a great use of their funding. They had wanted an exhibition space in the downtown library that was more significant than those which we are currently able to provide. And they see this screen as that space. And so an anonymous donor had spoken with us about a match. So we have the half-a-million dollars to do this, and so we'll be going forward in the early part of the year. So many thanks to the Ladies Library Association for agreeing to do this. We're happy about it. Should be pretty exciting.
And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Ladies Library Association for doing something that is in line with the way they want to support the library, but is a new idea. And that's fabulous.
It is. And it's a significant amount of money for them as well, so.
I spoke with Jan Barney Newman last week, and she is incredibly excited about this gift. And so excited that the group decided to do it collectively. So those were our two major items, and again, that was Halloween. And on to the races, on to what's next. Does anyone have any other comments or questions?
Great, thank you. Director's report, Josie.
So I apologize for not getting it into your bound report, but you have it in front of you in paper. And Pittsfield Branch opened on November twelfth. Trevorwood Branch will close on December sixteenth, and it will be our longest closure. It will be a ten-week closure. And it's because of the type of work that has to be done there, it's different from other locations. So this is the square, this is showing the meeting room, a diagram of the one bookable room that we can add to Trevorwood. So it will be one bookable room, not several, the way we've been able to do elsewhere, just about the way the library is designed. Those floors have to be refinished routinely, not annually, but routinely. So this will be an opportunity to sand down and reseal those floors, which, the wooden floors. The big doors to the program room have been problematic since day one. They swing, and they're heavy. And so you can get bumped hard, and if you're a little person, hard is relative, right? So we wanted to change those. It turns out that that is a major part of this project because we need certain structure up above them to change how they're in place. And so that's going to be a lot of work, and that's what takes, is what's going to take longer. So at Trevorwood, at Pittsfield, if you go in, you'll see the glass isn't up. We did move the Bernoulli to the youth area, and we surrounded it with the iPads. And it's such a hit, kids love it. So the Bernie, as we call it, is down in the noisier part of the library now, not near the, where the meeting rooms would be. And the glass isn't up, glass is going up, I'm looking. Or in, where.
We have a date. We're still waiting.
No.
Still wait on a date, probably three, four weeks.
Okay. We require the glass to be what is called fritted. So when you look at the glass in our buildings and you see that mark across them, the lines or the shadow, the white shading, that is not a piece of plastic that's been applied that can be peeled off. It's actually, it's blasted. I think it's sand, it's sand, isn't it, that does fritting, against the glass. So it takes, they have to do all the field measurements, they have to get the glass cut. Glass has to go out for the fritting and come back and then be put in. It takes longer because of what we require. And the reason we do this is it's permanent. People can't sit there and peel at that plastic, which you know they would do. And so then it would, it would be a problem. So, so that's what, there's a delay in that. And as soon as the glass is up, the booking will be started. And the Ann Arbor Synth Expo occurred on Saturday, November ninth, the same day as the ballet, which was amazing. And this is the space downstairs that we're now calling Sweet Secret Lab Annex, which is the space in the basement that we, the Friends of the Library Board, were so gracious about understanding how we needed more space to have additional public space. So you see how we have started to use it. That day, they had soldering irons set up for people to work on a public synth that at the end of that, that day, they played. And I'm not sure how successful it was, but it worked. And so it was a, it was a fun.
There were blinking lights.
There were blinking lights, so it did work. So it was a lot of fun, so that's the space. I would, I would like to say that same day was the event with the ballet. And we had five hundred people at the ballet in the lobby. It was quite a day at the library. And following it on Sunday was the Fifth Avenue Press release of nine books. And there were six, there have been sixteen total releases in twenty nineteen, and these nine books were released that day. I listed the authors for you in the director's report. For those of you who are curious about the names of the authors, it's a little hard to see all the authors, but they're in the, my written report. And then this is the summary of comments. We celebrated Bob Ross's birthday with another paint along. And you can see here, smiles were, smiles all around for Bob Ross's birthday. Our friend Britten, who once long ago worked here as something we call a techno-host, which we don't have anymore, showed his ADL prod in chilly Salt Lake City, wearing his exclusive ADL Summer Games scarf. Sorry. And this is Halloween, another amazing set of storytimes and trick-or-treating at the downtown library. We do it twice that day because we have so many children show up. And it was a, and we, it was a, it was always a good fun day. Changes of scenery are great, and we have five places people can switch things up. Here, we have a visitor to Trevorwood and one to Westgate, and they both seem pretty happy with their choices. They're talking about being able to go somewhere and switch up their scenery from where they work or where they live. A special shout-out to the ADL for offering art tools to make procrastination activities successful. And photos and a comment showing all the fun that was had at the Ann Arbor Synth Expo. And more than five hundred attendees of all ages took in the live performances and tried out some of the ADL's instruments. And this was going on at this, right in the same day as the ballet. Actress and comedian Deborah Wilson visited us in early November, and she shared a tremendous wealth of knowledge and experience in a program titled "The Art of Voice Over and Performance Capture." Her work has been showcased on everything from Mad TV to Avatar, World of Warcraft, The Simpsons, and tons of triple-A video game titles. You can see, people are happy. More than four hundred people of all ages took in the Academy of Russian Classical Ballet's performance of "The Nutcracker", including this little cutie. Finally, Friday Night Stories this last Friday night. I have to say, I have worked here twenty years, and I have not been to a library event where the mood of the room was as positive and uplifting and fun as Friday Night Stories here at the library, recognizing the lifetime contribution of Laura Rayner to this community and this library, and having a celebration that she wouldn't let us call one for her retirement on the same evening. And that is Laura, sitting in the middle of the stage with a lumberjack. And we ended the evening with knees-up Mother Brown, which I'm not going to make you all do this evening. And it was such a fun night. And if you ever had a doubt in your mind about the impact of all of our storytelling, we're going to show you a little clip that someone put up and Rich found, and I'm going to let that happen now. They are playing ADL Storytime. It does not get better than that, so, thank you.
It's wonderful.
Do we have any questions for Josie? Any questions? Seems like the month flew by. We were at polling station, too, for the election.
Oh, yes. We were polling stationed at Pittsfield, and even though we were closed, we managed to make that happen. And we were polling stationed downtown as well, in this room. Our fifth ward, fifth ward, District One, or something, that's right.
We are many things. Thank you, Josie. So no, no questions for Josie? Okay, great. Moving on, old business. Len, update on our construction projects.
Yes, good evening. As Josie mentioned, we've reopened Pittsfield, and we are currently working out or ironing out all the details for Trevorwood. It is a much larger project than Pittsfield, so we want to make sure everything, we got everything in order before we start. We've been looking at and working on bids for HVAC replacements in this space. This, this room is controlled by one air handler, and it is on the fritz. It's been that way a couple of months, so we've been working on cost to replace that and cost to replace the units or take the secret lab off the house system. So we have some numbers, we'll give them to you in January, hoping to get that going. We want to make sure we've done all of our homework on that. And then we, we do have rough budget numbers for the generator projects, which we've talked to Backup Power at the branches quite a bit. We'd like to get approval tonight to go to bid for that. Now, these are preliminary numbers. The, we need to get electrical engineers involved to go through all the sites to make sure that we're doing everything and everything sized properly. So we'd like to get approval for that tonight. And that rough budget number for that project right now is actually higher than, I mentioned a couple of months ago, it's at eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars for all locations.
So pretty much what we need is a nod, once you answer questions, because there's not a resolution
No, there's not.
to go to bid. It's just a more of a, you're, you're willing to let us take it to bid to see where we can get the numbers.
And Len, you said all locations, but all locations except for downtown.
Downtown, we do have a fifty-kilowatt backup generator, but it is strictly for our server room. It keeps the website up. If we lose power, the unit it would take to power the downtown library would be very large, probably three hundred kilowatt or bigger, guessing, so. And everything's underground downtown as well, so we don't have trees falling online, things like that. Whereas the branches, the outages, we see, it's kind of across the board at the branches. And even since we've met the last time, we had another one. It was either last Friday or the Friday before, we closed Trevorwood early. It was another outage from an underground transformer in the area. If we had this, it would have come online, we'd have been able to stay open.
How are you prioritizing the branches?
Really by failure. I'm going to say this, and, and, you know, I would say, in my opinion, it'd be Mallett's Creek. Right now, Pittsfield, Trevorwood, then Westgate. And that's kind of where we see the issues. And it does depend on the time of year and the storm, but that's kind of, you know, the issues we see are kind of in that order.
Okay.
And we did, part of the reason that number's higher is, it is a rough budget number, so we've kind of looked at all branches as if they were equal, which they are not. When we rebuilt, when we remodeled Westgate, we did some of the infrastructure for this, so that cost will be much lower.
So that was one of the questions I was going to have, is that will the, if we go out to bid, will we get one bid and we'll have a choice of doing it all for that bid, or we'll be modular and we can decide to phase it?
It will be one bid as far as a total number. Yes, they need to break the branches down, because if we choose that, hey, we'd like to do these two or these three and leave this one out, then we would have that option for sure, yes. Everyone, all the branches, well, we broke out because they're, they're unique in their own ways. The gas load at Mallett's Creek is much lower, but the electric load at Trevorwood is much higher. They're all different in their own ways. So the cost, when they come back, they'll be, the sizing of the generators might be a little bit different, so.
Will you, excuse me. Will you also be able to provide numbers on, like, how much you think that will save in, like, damages?
Yes, I, I think we can. It's, it is hard to tell, because we find out we, we had an issue long after a storm occurred. We could claim some of this on our insurance, but they require us to report that within forty-eight hours. A lot of times, if you look at a chiller, there's four compressors on that. One will fail, so the other three, three have kept us going. We won't see that failure for a while, and then we can't prove it was part of that last storm. So it makes it difficult. But I mentioned a couple meetings ago, last summer, it was about twenty-five thousand dollars just for Mallett's Creek to replace two, two of the compressors out of four on that unit.
Any other questions for Len?
Is there any way you can give us a ballpark of the number of days we're actually down per year? I know that's a.
It's a partial number. I think Mallett's Creek, I'm guessing probably, issues-wise, because we have issues, we stay open. We try to stay open. If the lights are on or if it's sunny outside, we stay open whether we have power or not, because we do have backup power that'll last a little bit. So we, we have outages where we absolutely stay open. The Trevorwood that was a week or so ago, we're in that time of year, we're getting started at five, five-thirty. So we had to make that decision. We, we closed a little early, not a lot. But I would say Mallett's Creek is probably, in the course of, in the year, ten, twelve times, probably. Trevorwood's probably something like six or eight, and Pittsfield's on the incline. So I would say Pittsfield's closer to eight or ten times a year as well.
That seems substantial.
Yeah. Westgate's different because it's a strip mall, we experienced issues that are power-related, but we can't tell if it's either the supplier or if it's a mall problem either. Because another suite could have an issue, we could glitch out, too. So that's why that's one on the, that's on the lower end of our priority.
So I, I do want to echo what Colleen said. I think it'd be a good idea for us to have the figures about what we're buying if we spend the money in effect, like, what the impact has been, both on closures, but also on the impact on the patron and the staff experience. I mean, if we have cases where we've been open and it feels like there's been no impact on the patrons, but if it's putting our staffs at risk of any sort of thing, that that should be part of the decision, that should be a factor into the decision-making process.
I can answer that. If, if, if the bathrooms are dark, we're closed. That's the, that's the, that's a given. If they're so light in the bathroom, if the bathrooms are dark, we're closed. The other thing to remember is often when these close, when these, when these power outages happen, the whole neighborhood's out. So if we have generators, we have heat, or we have air conditioning, we have light, and that's part of why we would like to do this.
Yeah.
Especially if Mallett's Creek goes out. Mallett's Creek's out, the whole neighborhood's gone out.
Yeah, everyone, there's like a little pie over by Mallett's. And if, if, if we go out, everyone around us can come recharge phones, recharge laptops, use our Wi-Fi, that type of thing. So, you know, there's an impact of what we feel, but there's also an impact of what patrons or even our community feels around us.
Yeah, I think that's even bigger reason to do it. I think, like, personally, there were a couple of days without power, like, maybe two years ago on the west side, and that Westgate had power, it was significant.
Yeah.
So what's the lifespan of what we're planning to buy?
A good commercial generator's going to last you, just like HVAC equipment, about twenty to twenty-five years. You can, there are less expensive models that are ten to fifteen years, but that's not something we'd probably recommend. When we do this and go to bid, it's going to be something that either municipalities or large box stores, they use and use regularly. It's, you know, there, there's a few makers or manufacturers out there that hospitals use that type of thing.
Are there warranties for these?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we have, we have our full service maintenance agreement or mechanical agreement. This would be added to that. So, these maintenance tacks that come in and service all of our HVAC equipment, they would also be servicing the generators as well. The unit we have here is a Cummins. Which is a, it's a, it's a large diesel unit, it's a good unit.
Okay. Great, so do you need like a universal nod or?
Well, just to prove, yes, we would like to bring, again, this is a very rough number. We had talked about a lower number before. But without electrical engineers really looking at it and specing something for each building, which, again, they're all different. It, it kind of skyrocketed a little bit. We'd like to bring you something realistic, but to do that, we need approval to go to bid for it.
Sure. I think we are, we're all in agreement, yes.
I nod.
Do it.
Yes.
Very good.
Is there, can you tell us what the timing is again? So...
I, I would like to bring this back for a resolution in January if possible.
Great, sounds good, thank you, Len.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, great, thank you. Okay, moving on, our auditors report. So, Dave from Yo and Yo.
Well, good evening, everybody. First, thank you on behalf of Yo and Yo. We're really pleased to report your June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen financial statement audit tonight. Well, first years, it's our first year out here, and we're really excited to be here. Obviously, first years are pretty challenging, and you guys had a lot of challenges this year. But I'm, again, I think we overcame a lot of that, and here we are presenting this audit and really in a timely manner, so I'm pretty excited about that. I'd like to thank Josie and the entire staff for all their help getting us here. I mean, it was never easy, we're asking lots of questions, but we got a lot of good answers too. We had a lot of good results too. So, you should be really, really proud of the year you had. As Colleen mentioned a little bit earlier, we met on Halloween. Some people had costumes on, we were just go as accountants, but that's who we are. But it's scary enough sometimes when the auditors are in there, they say. But we went through everything in really a lot of detail. We went through the report, it's a long, thick report. And again, went through all the details in that, making sure we answered all the questions the finance committee had for tonight. And we're bringing you a summary tonight of some slides and some highlights that we can talk about, okay? The first slide, talking about our, what you're hiring us for. You're really hiring us to audit your books, but also issue an opinion on the financial statements. And we issued what's called an unmodified opinion. It is the highest level of assurance we can get. It's a clean audit, and your financial statements are properly stated and generally accepted accounting principles. So, that's what you're looking for, free of material misstatements, really, really good stuff.
This is where we clap. It's good news.
I get a clause very often, but hey. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about where the revenue is, and obviously, we get a lot of our money from our community. And that's what we talk about, the community, and all the presentations we've talked about today is supporting our community. And the tax dollars were about ninety-four percent this year, which is a big part of it, part of what we get. Our revenues are up about four point four percent compared to last year, so that's a good thing, up to seventeen point two. And I have a slide following this that has the prior year numbers, just sort of point of reference. And our taxes were down about one percent in total. Our state aid, that money coming from the state of Michigan, was up about one percent. Our other, which is really donations, rentals, and some fees that we charge, was down about one percent. And our interest income was up one percent as well. So, it's just kind of a small shift in what we do, obviously, we're very well supported. And there's the prior year, just for, for you guys, just to have a point of reference to see where we were working at. So, where do we spend our money at? Again, probably no surprise to all of you here, personnel, sixty percent of it, up about two percent from the prior year. Purchased services, about eight percent, pretty consistent from one year to the next. We spent a little bit more on repairs, and we're doing a lot of, a lot of construction, things like that. So, maintenance tends to go up sometimes along with that, that was about one percent. Rentals were up about one percent as well. Our operating costs were up one percent, and our capital was down about two percent this year. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. One thing we did last year, and I think it's on your agenda tonight, there was a transfer a year ago. It was about three percent of our total expenditures, we transferred a year ago. We did not transfer it this year, and I think we're gonna transfer that tonight, or maybe take a resolution to look at it. But that was about three percent a year ago. And you can see that's that piece of pie down there, at the bottom right there, the purple one. So, the board, the library board adopts a budget every year, and I always kind of like to report on the budget, because that's what you see. And I think what you can see is your, you know, information you're getting, we didn't really, we didn't have any journal entries. So, what you're seeing on a monthly basis is what you're getting on your financial statement, so you can feel pretty good about that. And then taking a look at our final budget, which is our actual amount, you can see our revenues are very close, about two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars different, really one point seven of your budget. So, really, that's pretty a small percentage. The expenditure side was under budget, about one point two. The biggest piece of that, the capital right there, and all of our expense categories were under budget, but that one was the biggest. And again, some of that's timing difference, we had a lot of projects, we did some out of the capital projects fund this year as well, because we have a capital projects fund for some of that, so some of those dollars were spent there. But we're June year end, a lot of our construction happens in the summer. So, some of those projects happened over the rest of the summer and into what you guys are probably talking about today, that was probably done. So, just really a timing issue there. I kind of went back five years, I know it's our first year, but I always kind of like to learn about what I'm, what I'm talking about, so I have a little bit of point of reference, and you can see, other than fifteen, sixteen, all the years are pretty consistent. Revenue and expenses pretty close. We did some, we purchased some of the building and down here in fifteen, sixteen, which was a big change there. You can see those expenditures being way up there. And then it's the three years, we've had three really strong years after that, where our revenues have exceeded our expenditures. And you can just kind of take a look at that, just over, over time, it kind of, it kind of tells a story of where you've been.
That's the story of Westgate.
That's the story of Westgate. And the story that tells is, again, you can see, this is your fund balance. Now, you can see where you were at in fourteen, fifteen, where you spent that down to fifteen, sixteen, and you've been slowly building that back up over the last several years. See, you got a really good trend going back. I mean, it's been, it's a healthy trend, but you're still not to where you were in fourteen and fifteen. So, again, when you were at that point in time, again, a little financially stronger, obviously have a much better operation than we did back then, I think.
If I'm not mistaken, that is the summer that we bought the, and our political school's interest in this building, and so we used fund balance, and it was several million dollars to do that.
Yep, it was, yep. That's, that's the question we asked, and talked about that, yep. So, again, building in the right direction, again, gives you a lot of opportunities to do a lot of the cool things like you guys are talking about tonight. So, with all the challenges you had, you know, we talked about the numbers, and that's all my numbers discussion for right now, but we also look at your internal controls and test for state compliance, because you're a governmental entity, and you have to submit your documents to the state of Michigan. And with all the changes and challenges you had this year, and all the things you have going on, you have no material weaknesses in your internal controls, no significant deficiencies, no management comments, and no compliance findings. So, it's a really clean audit. And really, that's what I really have for you guys tonight. Are there any questions I can answer?
I'm good.
I'm happy.
I have, I have one, I'll ask a question. There's been discussion regarding accrual accounting and accrual representation, and how we must do that rather than a cash accounting presentation. Can you just reiterate that accrual accounting and accrual presentation is what's required?
Yeah, follow generally accepted accounting principles, and also what the state of Michigan allows. Your information has to be submitted to the Department of Treasury, so therefore they're requiring a GAAP basis financial statement.
Thank you.
Great, so this is your first year working with us?
It is.
Thank you. This is, this is quite an endeavor. Thank you for working so closely with staff and with our committee, with our finance committee. Congratulations.
Thank you, we're happy.
It's our pleasure.
We passed, so we'll see you
Next year.
Next year?
Yes, that's what we're recommending.
Great.
That we follow, yes.
Fantastic, we'll, we'll keep up the good work, I trust we will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Safe travels. Fantastic, a clean audit. Let's see, let's see, moving on. To a resolution to accept the two thousand eighteen, nineteen financial audit.
On page eighteen.
Yeah, on page eighteen. Victoria Dharma, could you read it?
I'm the first, I'll read it. The following resolution, the board resolves to accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen financial audit prepared by Yo and Yo CPAs to that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Seconded. All those in favor, or, your discussion, yes, no? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Good, motion passes, resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to Bonner Advisory Group with Luke Bonner. Yes, so, a bit of background info, for the past several months, we've been closed session, closed session on understanding what our real estate options are with the downtown branch. For many of us who were voted in in two thousand sixteen, it's been an ongoing question as to what the library can do with the space, considering that we did not manage to pass our two thousand twelve bond effort. And as the years have gone on, we've learned about what our capacity issues are, what our programming needs are, what, what the library's presence means to the downtown community. And thankfully, we've had information all along the way. I think we've been very good at doing our homework and asking good questions and getting the right people in the room to help us, help guide us. And that included HBM Architects doing a program overview. We had our bond council come in and give us an update on how bonding would work, should we choose that path. We've also done an epic MRI study, so, or survey. And now, we've come to Luke Bonner, as our, I think, one of our, our final stops into understanding what our options are and coming to a better, a better discussion. So, Luke, it's all you.
My up?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parker, and members of the board. Very happy to be here tonight. I want to introduce my team very quickly. Luke Bonner with the Bonner Advisory Group, Travis Maces, our program director is also here, Scott Collins with BDC Consulting, and John Mieske with Mieske Architects. Very excited to work on this project with you guys, we appreciate the opportunity. This really builds on our experience of both economic development and real estate development, in terms of how we looked at the library as a mixed-use development opportunity in downtown Ann Arbor. Just a quick overview of what we'll be covering tonight. We will be looking at different aspects of the site itself and the massing sort of architecture layout of a redevelopment project, some finance options that the library could consider, economic development incentives that would be applicable to a project like this, including an economic development incentive, which would be a good alternative funding source for the project. And then a benchmark study that we did, just to confirm whether or not we were crazy with what we went through on this feasibility study. So, in terms of what we were basing, kind of the preliminary thought around this project, were, number one, the fact that Ann Arbor needs a new downtown library, that it's a sustainable facility. You have major utilization for your use, high demand on your facilities. This downtown is growing more diverse every single day, and there is a true desire to have a library that would be very inspiring to visitors locally and for folks coming in from outside of town. And based on that, we wanted to leverage the real estate, the location. The Ann Arbor market, from a real estate development perspective, is highly desirable, both locally and nationally. The site itself is very well positioned, being very close to campus, but also a couple of blocks away from downtown. There's a significant demand for housing, both affordable market rate and workforce housing in downtown Ann Arbor. There's a huge demand in office, so we wanted to make sure that we understood those markets as well when we were looking at the feasibility of this. But most importantly, as you have all experienced, going to the vote of the people for a new library failed a few years ago. So, how do you go through this program leveraging a partnership, a private partnership, and even a public partnership with the city of Ann Arbor itself, to get through building a very exciting library for the community and bringing in uses in downtown that are of high demand as well? So, just a quick snapshot of your property. It's a little over an acre in size, just three parcels that comprise the library property. We're calling it public land zoned, even though two parcels are zoned something else, it's really kind of an obsolete zoning. So, we consider this public land. The building itself is around a hundred thousand square feet. And this, the, the actual size of the parcel itself, like I said, fifty-two thousand square feet or a little bit over an acre. When we looked at the massing of the site, we went to, as far as this model goes, we went to the maximum nine hundred, nine hundred percent floor area ratio, which is allowable under D1 zoning. So, that would have to be a rezone of your property from public land to D1 zoning. But it also, that nine hundred percent FAR includes the premiums, which are now affordable housing premiums, to build up to that size of FAR. For comparison's sake, we did poll the information that was publicly available about the Y lot and what the city was seeking in terms of their RFP, and I believe they're concluding that study here very soon. It may be if not even tonight, if I'm not mistaken. So, we wanted to put the context of the library at a max FAR D1 zoning compared to the Y lot, which is what was put out in the public, as far as that development process goes. Now, here's a quick cross-section of the library itself. Four stories of library, two stories of underground parking. We put in one story of office, which is around twenty-five thousand square feet, and then the rest of the project being mixed residential, meaning affordable and market rate housing. Here's an idea of size. So, in our model, we have the library being a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet, and that's based on the programming that we researched, that you guys had already had completed. We use twenty-seven thousand square feet as office, and then about two hundred and forty-two thousand square feet of residential. In terms of the FAR itself, you can see, based on the different areas, the four hundred percent, seven hundred percent, and nine hundred percent, those are all based on affordable housing premiums. So, on the seven hundred percent, and this is new, by the way, this is as of a couple of weeks ago, city council voted for an affordable housing premium as far as their residential goes downtown. So, if you see the seven hundred percent floor area ratio requires twenty percent affordable housing units to get to that gross FAR. The nine hundred percent FAR requires thirty percent affordable units. Now, in terms of timing, affordability was something that we were already looking at for this project. Our opinion was that the library being a highly recognized, an influential public institution, that a redevelopment project of this size should consider affordable housing as part of the project. Now, if we look at the finance options or ways, like how do you do this deal, how do you put it together? We looked at a couple of these. First, we'll call a sale leaseback, thank you. First, we'll call a sale leaseback, and that is essentially selling the library property to the developer. Developer rebuilds the library, and then you lease the library back from him for over a period of time. The revenue to the library is essentially the land sale. The land sale itself could offset the cost of the bond required to build the new library. We have a sale buyback. You still bond to build the library, but then you have the land sale overall that would offset, again, the bond amount to actually, which would reduce your debt service. We have a build and lease air rights. So, you're building the library, you're doing a bond to build the library, you're leasing your air rights for probably fifty years, if not longer. So, there's revenue coming in from the leasing of the air rights, which would offset your annual debt service. Building and selling the air rights, so you're still bonding to build the library, you're selling the air rights, you use that sale proceed to offset the cost of your bonds. And then the last was, you just build the library on your own, with no other partnership. So, here's an example of what those different scenarios would look like. Drawing, let's see, does this work? Here we go. So, we took a bond issue of around sixty-two million, which I think was pretty consistent with the construction estimates that we got based on your program. So, we looked at that a couple of different ways. And if we took just your bonding ability and what would typically be sold out on the market, we, we looked at an annual bond payment of about three point six million dollars to build a new sixty million dollar library. Now, if we were to lease the air rights, that would increase another million dollars, around a million dollars a year in lease costs that would come back to the library, then essentially offsetting, there we go, offsetting the annual bond payment by a million dollars, or about two point six million. This would also, in this kind of scenario, after paying off your debt service, which we assume is thirty years, then that leasing your air rights would continue on past that. Then eventually, at some point in the future, you would have an additional million dollars a year in revenue, based on that, that lease. In this scenario here, where you're building the library and then selling your air rights, again, the same assumption is here, where it's about a sixty-two million dollar project. The sale of the air rights, we used sixteen point five million, which takes your net bond issue to about forty-five million. And again, it's around the same annual bond payment, about two point six million. So, just a couple of things really quickly on those first two charts. We used an air rights lease of a million dollars, and we used the sale of air rights at sixteen point five million dollars. Those two numbers we came up with are based on what's going on in the market right now. It isn't necessarily what has been finalized. It isn't necessarily what has been finalized or deals have been completed, but based on our intel, this is kind of where projects are being negotiated at right now. So that was a good rule of thumb for us to use today. Then we have the sale leaseback, again, selling the property, 16.5 million, and then leasing back at about $33 a square foot, which always negotiable, but that was a number that we wanted to plug in based on, you know, Class A space downtown. Then you'd have an annual lease cost of about $5 million to lease that space over time. With, again, a sale proceed of about 16 and a half million that would allow you to offset a lot of costs for the construction of the library. Then we have a sale buyback, where you're selling the property, the developer's building it for you, and you're buying it back. So still having to issue bonds to buy that property back. If we assume you're still selling it at 16.5 million, the land, still bonding for a $62 million library, that your bond amount is going to be around $45 million, again, to buy that portion of the library back from the developer, which, again, brings your bond payment to about 2.6 million. And of course, the exercise of just building the library by itself would put you at a annual bond payment of about 3.6 million dollars. So part of what we went through on this, there are so many variables tied to this. This all assumes, number one, a developer performer that works. So we took kind of the developer vantage point of doing a deal in downtown, knowing the affordable premiums that are in place, recognizing either what property is being leased for or sold for, and does that on its own make sense? Then we took your portion of your project, bonding for it, and how does it intersect into the property? And that's how we sort of made our best guess, truthfully. And that's a combination of what we know today and what is sort of happening in the market today. But the reality is, a project like this is going to take several years to actually get through. We believe that the right thing to do is to have a very significant community input period, which sometimes could last 12 to 18 months, depending on how that's actually laid out and the kind of input and feedback you're getting from the community. Then you have to assume a fairly thorough entitlement process with the city of Ann Arbor that goes along with that before you actually get to construction. So this is about what we know today, but this can change considerably to five years from now. This has more to do, if we were doing the project right now, how would it look? But the underwriting for something like this wouldn't take, take place until several years into the future.
Sorry, can we, with the numbers that you were presenting, does that include the cost of us operating in the interim while the library is being developed?
It does.
Okay.
Yes. So we included relocation cost as part of this, and then operational expenses that would have to be somewhere else, either leased or some other arrangement.
Did you find us a space?
Again, given that this may have happened for several years, that would be hard to do.
Okay.
But you got great financials to do it.
Yes, we did just pass our audit. Good. Great. So I think we're able to ask questions along the way, yes? So no one, we don't have to wait till the very end? Yes? Okay, good.
So when we start to look at this kind of project, right, there's a huge public component being the library. And then there's also a subsidized component being the affordable housing. And to a certain degree, the library is kind of in that subsidized component, too. Based on the benchmark studies that were reviewed, and I'll get to one in a few slides, a project like this does need economic development incentives. It has to be a financeable deal for the private sector, it has to make money. I mean, whether, you know, we want this, you know, we want to believe that or not, that somebody has to make money on this project for it to work. And so there are a handful of economic development incentives that we believe could make building the library more feasible, but also doing the affordable housing component more feasible as well. So the first one we have, and we call it the potential alternative funding source, and that's through the, what's called the transformational brownfield legislation that was enacted a couple of years ago by the state legislature. The program is managed by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And these projects are, you know, transformational in nature, right? They have a huge impact locally on the landscape of real estate, on the community. This project falls in that category. The investment size threshold that the state requires for a community the size of Ann Arbor, this project also fits because we're looking at about 150 to 160 million dollar project. And why this is important, this funding source allows for state income tax and sales tax on a project site to be captured while construction is going on, while commerce is being active, and while people are living on site. It's a special carve-out so that those tax dollars essentially can be used to invest back into the project and therefore reducing the capital outline potentially the developer may have to build the library or to build affordable housing, therefore making the project more financially viable longer term. The second box are two different examples of tax abatements. There are, there's a Commercial Rehabilitation Act and Commercial Facilities Exemption. They essentially work the same. There's, the one on the left, the Commercial Facilities Exemption is a, that's the one from 1978, can't see. I made it too small for you guys, and therefore it's too small for me. But that's a 12-year tax abatement at 50% of the rate. So instead of paying full 100% tax rate, you're only paying 50% for 12 years. The one on the right, the Commercial Rehab, which is the 2005 legislation, that actually freezes the value of the property at pre-development level for up to 10 years. So there are no new property taxes that are paid on the project over 10 years. In both of those scenarios, that's a significant savings to the taxpayer or the developer, the private sector developer, which has a significant impact on the performer. The last two, there's the Obsolete Property Rehab Act that actually works very similarly to the Commercial Rehab Act, where there's a tax freeze in place for actually up to 12 years on that property. Again, massive tax savings, which has a big impact on the financial performer. And then the last one is the State Housing Development Act, which enables a local community like Ann Arbor to take a payment in lieu of taxes on affordable housing projects versus the typical ad valorem property tax. And then our case study in Little Italy, the Little Italy Branch Library in Chicago. This was a public-private partnership, very small, though in terms of comparison. The library itself, in this case, is only about 22,000 square feet. But the different layers of incentives that were required, even in that case, to get this project done, were pretty significant. There's a low-income tax credit on the library, which is special to the city of Chicago. There's about 15 and a half million dollars from the Chicago Housing Authority in terms of capital that was provided to the deal itself. There's the 4% low-income housing tax credit, or LI-TAX, if you've heard that terminology before, on the affordable housing side. The library sat in a tax increment financing district, so there's $17 million that went into the project for infrastructure improvements. Then the private developer had a $3.1 million note on that. And then the TIF, different in Chicago than it is in Michigan, but there's a lot of the Tax Income Financing Funds, which is an economic development tool, that was leveraged to actually build the library itself. So in this case, the library was out $0 overall, and then was able to lease their building back essentially for a dollar a year for 99 years. There was a donation credit also within the city of Chicago because there was land donated back as part of the project. And originally, it was on a 120-acre site owned by the Housing Authority, which this piece was specifically split off and set aside for this property. The point on this, there was affordable housing. There was also market rate luxury housing on this. And something to note, because I know affordable housing is a major discussion in Ann Arbor right now, for the purposes of doing an affordable housing project in a downtown environment where you're building vertically, there are costs, there aren't cost benefits for doing vertical construction. Where it may seem like, from a density standpoint, you just go taller and taller, you can fit more affordable units in. But there are nuances within the tax credit that only allow a certain portion of the tax credit to apply to construction costs. So when your construction costs go up because you're building vertically, then all of a sudden, I can't do as many units. And what helps offset that is bringing more market rate units into the process or into the, into the development itself. That's also something that HUD and MISTDA, which is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, want affordable housing units mixed in with other income type of units. So that is essentially what had happened on this project. There's a mix of market rate and affordable housing, which is also a mix that we looked at on the performer that we built it for you guys as well.
Can you, do you know, can you describe what kind of partners came in on that? So when you're talking about partners, were they other nonprofits that?
So primarily, the Chicago Housing Authority, the city of Chicago, private developer, and the library. So there are four partners in that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then our closing thoughts overall, just to recap, you know, Ann Arbor, downtown Ann Arbor needs a vibrant library. I mean, it's very clear, you know, going through this process ourselves, but just knowing about the library, the amount of programs that you guys are providing are incredible. And you're almost over-leveraged with participants in usage of your facilities itself because you've done such a good job, you know, quite frankly. So the need to have a new library is extremely high. The real estate is fantastic. It's a great thought on your end to look at how do we leverage this real estate to make our library happen, but let's make other community-based economic development programs happen with it that. The development process, you know, if you choose to move forward, the development process and the community partnership needs to be very thoughtful and very, very engaging. This is unique, very unique for this community. I would say for the state of Michigan, this is probably, you know, very unique. It happens in other places. Public-private partnerships happen regularly in other urban areas. It's not something that we see here all the time. So it can be done, where there's a will, there's a way, but that has to be very transparent and open and engaging process. And then the, the private sector partner must be very sophisticated and must be very well-established. This isn't, this isn't a project for a smaller developer. This is a project for a much larger developer that has both institutional and private equity backing, and they're not going anywhere. And so there are a number of those across the country that could engage in this kind of partnership. They need to weather the storm or weather an economic downturn. They need to be able to provide a lot of different resources to your team and to the community as part of this process. So with that, I'm finished with my presentation, and myself and the team are here to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Let's dive in. We are actually very excited about this. We really are. This is a lot of work on your part, and I know we've been through many discussions and closed sessions, so we can bring those to light.
So other than Chicago, can you give us examples of libraries in other communities that have made some sort of mixed-use building work?
I have notes. There's one other that we put in the case study. It was another Chicago example. That one was a 44-one-bedroom apartment project. Evergreen Real Estate was the partner with the Chicago Housing Authority. It happened very similarly to this one. There are several in New York. There is one, I would say generally, I would say failed publicly, where at the onset, there was a promise of affordable housing, and it only affordable housing project. And the timeline from conception to final construction was 20 years, and they ended up building only luxury residential units as part of the project. So that was like a bad example. But for a lot of reasons, that deal fell apart. But yeah, in New York, there's probably five or six that we looked at, and they're all generally the same. This is where your project is, is different, is that the library is so big. In those cases, the library is very small, usually 20,000 to 30,000 square feet.
Those are, those are often branches, correct?
Branches instead of a main district library.
This is not something that has been seen in a main branch. Do I have that correct, Julie?
What I could tell now, but...
From, from what we know, not to this extent, no. It's been talked about, but it's not been done.
So we would be pioneering.
And there's another distinction, too, which is we're not a city library.
We're not, and that is something to point out in the New York library system and the Chicago library system. Those are city, the libraries are departments of the city. So they're already connected to the city financially and to governance. So it's a, it's different in that respect, that we're totally our own taxing unit and our own governing, your governing authority. So we would be the partner.
Right.
We would be the partner, and that's why getting that partner right is the most, is very, very important. There's no other agency with our, who bears the same responsibility that we do or the same risk that we do as in some of the Chicago or New York public or some of the Brooklyn. I think there's one in Brooklyn. Brooklyn has its own library system, so I think...
Can you speak to public, public reaction to housing on top of a library? Was it something that seemed out of scope for a library's mission?
Are you talking about in the studies that we, the benchmark studies we did? It didn't seem like it, actually. It, what it seemed like, there was a strong desire for affordable housing and new investment in those areas. So these projects were catalyst projects to take public land and turn it into an economic development project. And that essentially is, is the way it looked for us. In terms of the public engagement side of it, it's really hard to tell if there was major points of consternation with the public in the library, the city. I would say the project that took 20 years and then ended up like doing the bait and switch, that probably had a lot of problems with it.
But Luke, I'm wondering if one other thing that's different here is the way you're describing the projects, it sounds like the public engagement might have been different because they were adding branches as a, so adding a new service to a neighborhood that didn't have a branch as opposed to replacing an existing.
It was a little bit of both. It was replacing and rebuilding an existing and also adding new branches.
You said twice, and I, I heard this loud and clear, and I think it's important and it's kind of an exciting part of looking at this option is how the public needs to be the next phase of the work we do if we move forward in this direction. We have a, a public meeting phase, and we, and we have lots of conversation about what our users want.
And we also have to think about where we are within greater, the greater scope of institutions here, right? Also tackling issues around affordable housing. What, what is actually doable within our lifetimes and while we're still on the board? And with, with the money that we have and the money, and then while we're looking at the money that we need to do this. Can you, can you speak to that? Can you speak to, are there, in the case studies that you looked at, were there zoning challenges or, or what kind of, when we talk about public engagement, how was that a collaborative effort in the other cases that you had looked at?
Every project is different. It's, it's, it's really hard to compare how one went through a process versus the other because the communities are all different. And I'll give you a really good example of that. I know it's not a library project, but if you look at what the Amazon headquarters, too, went through by the time it got in front of residents and stakeholders in New York, I mean, that was, they, they kicked them out of town, right? They go to Arlington, and it's like, come on in. So it's going to be completely different. Just my experience here in doing projects, there is a benefit to significant community engagement on how these shape themselves, and the city's process kind of lends it to multiple reviews in the community. You're different because you're, you're a public entity. And so I think there has to be a lot of transparency established upfront of why you're doing this and what the benefits are. And then it's kind of like, what do we, what does it all look like? How does it all come together? And I think it's ideal to have the partner with you upfront in those conversations going along because they're the ones that are going to be able to determine the financial, how this is molded financially, both for themselves, but also what does that relationship look like with you guys? So this is a very different community when it comes to public engagement. So I hate to compare it somewhere else. We just know that we have to do it here. And you have to be very patient with it, and ultimately, you'll get a good outcome.
So benefit-wise, when we look at the charts, it's really interesting how similar, like at least three of them are, and then...
And then, I mean, the only one that really stands out is like if we just try to stay by ourselves and don't partner with anyone. Like the number at the end is like almost twice as much capital outlay. So I think that's definitely worth considering. And it just logically makes sense that like if you try to do something by yourself, it's going to be harder.
And the risk is high.
Right. So like, I mean, I think you're right that we need a solid partner, but that I can see advantages.
The affordable housing piece is, um, really interesting because my reaction is yes, we want to do that and we're not interested in using our land to make money. We're you, we're interested in using it to, to serve the public. I like the idea of people being able to live in the building who work here. So that's, but having that conversation with the public, it'll be interesting to see what the thoughts are and, um, and how, how much sense that makes to, to people who have been, I think, grappling with this issue in terms of, um, what's happening around Ann Arbor. It's a place people want to live. So how do we, how do we make sure that it doesn't become too homogeneous?
And who already work here, right? So, um, who work here and, and can't afford to, to live here.
Right.
All right. So I, I just want to say one other piece about it, which is that, you know, it's easy when we, we look at the, the numbers and start thinking about, you know, is it feasible to do? Because this is a feasibility study.
Right.
Not a sort of a vision study about why we would want to, um, move forward with the work and the effort and the risk. And, um, it thinks that, that enables us to provide for all of Ann Arbor, for our patrons and our customers and our city itself. And that's not in here because we didn't ask you to do that and this is not really your work. But that would be why we would do it, is what we could get out of it. I have a really boring question after that.
A really boring answer.
Yeah. That the economic development incentives that you listed, those are all, those don't affect our dollar numbers. Those are economic, those are things that make it profitable for the partner. Right? Those incentives don't change our bottom line in terms of the project. They just make it workable for the developer.
So it could, it definitely could. Um, I think the one that would have the most impact is the transformational brownfield.
We could be the direct beneficiary.
You could be the beneficiary of that. Uh, because there's a twenty percent of the total eligible cost on the project um, could be counted as the incentive that the developer receives. It doesn't matter what cost of the project that essentially goes to. So if he took twenty percent of that incentive and applied it just to the library itself and you're selling the land to the developer or you're leasing the air rights or however it works out, um, that has a significant impact on what you end up paying either for a bond or, you know, to lease back to the developer. Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, the, the massing that you had presented, I just, I think it's worthwhile to just reiterate that this is not a design. This is, this is, this is a reflection of the data that we had given to you that other consultants had given to us. So when O'Neill did the evaluation and then HBM did the program evaluation, this is, this is what we need to continue to operate with additional things that, uh, the community needs. But this is not a final design.
No, uh, you know, we took your program, uh, your program studies that you guys did. And, you know, we based that into the stories of the library. Um, you know, this open space atrium area was certainly, um, highly desirable as part of that process. And then, you know, what goes up above, what we did was standard in the market today. If somebody were doing this today, what components of the project would they do? It was high level, um, let's use this as our main assumption. But if you end up going through the process, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we talked about in terms of having, you know, retail on the, on the, uh, Williams side potentially. You know, does that make any sense for you or the developer? Does more office make sense for you, for you or the developer? You know, the other thing that, uh, you have to recognize too is, um, you have like total control of what goes on in here. Like you're not going to partner with somebody who's going to do something that you don't want, right? You want uses that are going to work very well with the library. And so maybe a hotel doesn't work well at the library, right? So we were just plain Jane office residential. That's how we kept it. And then the, the two stories of underground parking, um, which again, could be another layer of partnership, you know, with the DDA, considering that, uh, the library lane parking deck is right next door. Is there an expansion opportunity, um, or not? So.
Good. There's so much potential with our building.
With our, with our site.
Yes, right, exactly.
With our site, yes.
Yeah, there's no potential with your building. That's what we're trying to say here.
Yes, yes, there is a difference. Thank you, thank you. Gosh, do we have any other questions for Luke and the team?
I really enjoyed working with the team. I learned a lot through this process. John, all the things that you, all the considerations you made as we discussed the pro, the project and the process, were really helpful in particular. Thank you.
I think when, um, I, I don't, I never anticipated having this language of FAR and being able to speak to it and then understanding the complexity around financing besides bonding and then also thinking to, um, how we can finance this without, you know, having this. And we know when we surveyed for, for folks through, through the epic MRA study that the, the odds of a bond passing were not as great as we had wanted or hoped. Um, but that's.
Survey, that's two years ago now, right? So a lot has changed in two years.
So this is a discussion that will continue to see if we need to take another pulse of the community. And I think have further discussions with the board too, before we go back out. But you're, you're not going anywhere, Luke. The team is here.
I'm not going anywhere, no.
Yes.
For how long?
We'll see. I don't, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out how long this would take.
But, but this is a feasible, feasibility study, not a plan, not an architecture design, not any of that kind of stuff, just in case folks are like, oh, you know.
No, it's just reference material, additional reference material for the library board who loves reference materials.
But we also like to move sometimes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I want to make sure I preface, this is not a document that can be taken to either public mo, markets for bond, bonding purposes.
Right.
Or for financing purposes at all. It's, it's very high level.
And also you are not the actual developer, so that's also.
We are not a development team.
Yep.
We are, yeah. Just a bunch of guys. Only to help out.
Thank you.
I think one thing to note is that even if the appetite has changed in the community, like as we saw the schools were, you know, successful, that's great. But that doesn't mean that we, um, if we can avoid asking the public for, for more money, if we are, there are other ways to finance this, I think that would be very responsible as a board, so.
Yeah, this is a promise that we made.
Right.
I think when a lot of us came on board was to really understand what our options are. And this is, this is it. This is one of many options available to us.
It's been a journey since we started in twenty seventeen and pushed towards this. Can we come up with a feasible way to do this without asking, um, the public for more money? And that we actually have ideas are fantastic. Um, I, I have a question for you, um, that I might have asked before. Of those four options, between, um, air rights selling and air rights leasing look the most promising? Well, um, between those two, there seems to be a subtle difference in terms of what our costs are. Do, do you have a recommendation one over the other?
I don't. The, these are options that could be considered. Um, a- and again, this really depends on, once you get into a relationship with a private sector developer and the community, what does the reality look like moving down the road? And then at that point, what's more realistic, um, financially and then, you know, politically with your stakeholders? What's going to be the most beneficial? And in, in both cases, they essentially affect the bond the same. It's either you have revenue, lease revenue that's paying the bond debt service.
Yeah.
So you're saving a million dollars a year or using that number that we used sixteen and a half million to essentially buy down the amount of bond that, that you issue. And then your debt service is still around sixteen or two point six million a year. So they're, they both have the same effect.
Right. But that seems leaps and bounds ahead of selling our property.
Let's not do that one. That one doesn't look.
I think, um, you know, my feeling about that is in general, based on what I know right now, is that keeping the land that the library owns is something that we want to do because it's the public's land.
Yes, I think that's the one thing probably that we all feel the same about. I think there's so much nuance on the board, but I think everyone feels, I mean, maybe I don't know this, but I think that's one thing that unifies everyone, that we will not give away the library's property. Like, that's very important.
But, but I do want to point out that in the leasing of the air rights scenario, that lease continues on over time.
Right.
So long-term, there is a, there is a net benefit from that revenue stream versus just selling it and have that one-time income.
Okay.
And Jimmy, I want to add just a little nuance to what you said. I think I would say that I'm absolutely committed to, I mean, thirty years sounds like a long time, but thirty years is nothing for the library.
Right.
So like, we can't just think about what's going to work for thirty years. We have to think about, we, we, we don't want to hamstring two generations down the road.
Right.
Exactly. So we don't want to, we don't, we don't want to in thirty years end up with not, with no property in downtown Ann Arbor. I think that's what I'm trying to say.
I, I appreciate the, the long view of this. I mean, we are accepting a gift from the library, Ladies Library Association. And this is, uh, how old is this institution, the, the ladies?
The ladies, eighteen.
They just had their birthday, right?
And they had their second centennial three years ago. Yeah, three years ago, something like that. I think it was three years ago, so.
Right. I think it's worth noting, um, that we have fans and we have support. We also think along the same lines of understanding what our current needs are and then preparing for the future needs.
And we're one of the last public library systems in Michigan who were founded by a Ladies Library Association group with an active Ladies Library Association group. So that has been uninterrupted all those years. There are a number of public libraries begun that way, but very few still have.
Well, thank you, Luke. Thank you.
Thank you.
For that presentation, I think, you know, if we have additional questions, uh, staff, Josie will follow up with you.
Please.
And I hope there are questions cooking in the audience for, uh, comments too, so please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our agenda. We have a resolution to approve the project budget for the fourth floor renovation project. So that's Len again.
Yes, hello again.
This is the fourth floor here.
Yes, it is.
Otherwise, which is when I think many of us came on board, I think we cut, was it like the UN style seating area?
Right, and we've done some work and now we're going to do more.
Yeah, the fixed furniture is gone. Other than that, the space is pretty much the same.
Just re-carpeted and repainted, yeah.
Okay.
So now he'll tell you the plan.
Yes, so, uh, the proposal is to, uh, remove the, uh, the curved wall, remove the concrete wall on the inside, move the, uh, control room, the podcast studio to the rear of the room. It would also give us a green room and a really nice, uh, gathering space and a check-in area for authors and different presenters coming into the space. So it basically reinvents the entire fourth floor public side.
Can you orient them to that, where the atrium is and the entry, where, where things are now?
Yeah, so, uh, it says limits of construction. Right below that, 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 that box is the atrium. And so the double doors you're seeing moving forward that says, um, entry is, that does not exist. That would be a new wall there, um, that was the emergency exit hallway from the existing room now. And so currently you can see it's kind of shadowed the, uh, just above limits of construction. To the left, you can see that little room. That's our kitchenette to conference room area where we have closed session.
Okay.
And so just on the outside of that would be, uh, the new check-in area and then that large o, open space.
I'm sorry, Len, where are the doors into the room today? Where on this map are the doors into the room?
Kind of.
Currently, there's a wall right here. Third wall comes across like this.
Yes.
And you walk back here and go back over here and this is the entrance.
So when you said limits of construction, I was looking at the one at the top.
Sorry, I apologize. No, that's the exterior wall. Outside of that is, is air. Yes.
So would we have closed session in the green room then?
No, it does, this doesn't impact conference room.
Oh, it's still there, okay.
Where the green room now is, is a storage closet.
Storage closet.
Okay, okay.
It's nice to see you thinking big and beyond just like renovating inside that one room, you know? Because there's a lot of almost dead space up there on the fourth floor, that hallway. I actually sat there today for a little bit and charged my phone. And like it's, it's an okay spot to sit for a second, but it's pretty dark and I'm glad you're.
Yeah, this is like many project, Thicke, we talked about the room and then with everyone involved inside the library staff, you know, what could we deliver on that really meets the needs of everyone? And the room just kept getting a little bit bigger.
That sounds typical, right? Can you just, so who is everyone? What?
Uh, myself, Eli, uh, Matt Dubay, uh, Rich Reddy, um, I think Amanda Zott was involved. That'd be the shortlist. I'm sure there were others on their staff that have also had ideas, so.
So what's the seating in this new space?
We're currently one eighty-ish. I think this takes us up to.
No, we're currently one twenty. This gets us.
This gets us to one eighty.
All right.
So I have a general perception since we moved our meetings down here that we're using this space for lots of programs in a way that we could only do limited before. And this is not to remove that, it's to add the, the, sort of reconfigure it with the idea and expand the capacity for programming.
Yeah, and I might be, uh, so this room, when you, we moved down here for the board meetings, this room had already had the AV package. So when we went to stream it, it only made sense for it to be in this room or we would have had to, have to have done this already upstairs. Um, the cameras, uh, upstairs, that's old CTN cameras, we don't, it, um, that department would have to set the room up every time we have a board meeting. Here, it's, it's a little bit less work. It's the work on their staff, but they, it's, it's less. This would be, give us two options. So if there was a huge program here, we could do the boardroom on the fourth floor and still live stream.
It's kind of nice because sometimes, I mean, in the summer, sometimes we need the space, but we don't always have a large audience.
I know. I know we have a lot of fans though.
Yes, the stage impacts this room too. So there's only so much we can do in here.
Great. Um, any other questions for Len then before we go ahead and read this resolution and vote on this? Any other thoughts?
Is the podcast studio something you want to make available to the public to use? Or is it mostly something where you're like vetting stuff and?
Yeah, the part of the issue with the current podcast studio, which is kind of in a former telephone room, is that it busies this whole room for us to use the podcast studio. And part of the design of this is it will allow the podcast studio to be used even when a program is happening in the room. That's why you can see the double walls, the soundproofing in there. It's adjacent to the new control room, so it is possible. The other part of that is that the podcast studio is where a third camera or a fourth camera can go when there is a large fancy event happening in that room. So it's actually like a double sliding door we can open and have a camera person inside the podcast studio that's not taking room away from the seated space. So it is, and the other part of this is that this will allow easier access to the public to be able to, uh, allow booking of the podcast studio, especially for partnerships.
We don't have that now.
We're able to do it, but it requires, um, it requires, as I said, the entire room to be busied and it is very much a makeshift space. So we lose the boardroom as a bookable meeting room when a podcast is being recorded. Whereas this, they make them separate spaces and we'll be able to book them separately.
Great. So when Sarah Vowell came and did the podcasts, she had the entire?
Entire room.
Yeah, we can't do anything in that meeting room when we're recording a podcast currently.
And I don't think there's any real, are there any accessibility concerns, compromises or improvements that this design makes for us?
It does give us two exits, which is, uh, you know, currently we have two emergency exits. This actually gives us two real exits, uh, so we would be able to, be a lot easier to get out. It gives us a nice big double door, which currently there's a single door going in there. So accessibility is generally improved by this, especially we do have the option, once we get to the point of stage design, to make an accessible stage. Depends on the stage height and the ramps and all that kind of stuff, but it would be possible for us to do that in this space where we can't currently do that.
Are our bathrooms still? I mean, can we still accommodate?
It's actually, we're anticipating that if this, once this project is completed, uh, this will become our main program space for the downtown library, mostly because there's more toilets up there. And there are, you know, those toilets each have two stalls instead of one. So right now down here, there are just these two bathrooms on either side. So that's a much better sizing for that. It's actually, we're anticipating that if this, once this project is completed, uh, this will become our main program space for the downtown library, mostly because there's more toilets up there. And there are, you know, those toilets each have two stalls instead of one. So, right now, down here, there are just these two bathrooms on either side, so that's a much better sizing for that. Plus, there's just more room for people to be around the space. There's the green room, all that kind of stuff that we don't have right now. One of the major challenges with this space is when we have someone famous, there's no place to tuck them, uh, that they can be private before the event without having to come up from the back of a room.
Or it's usually my office.
Yeah. Whereas this, that's why the green room is right in there. So, they'll be able to have a space that's appropriate for that.
But we still have one elevator.
That's correct.
Still have one elevator. Yep.
Estimates.
Well, that's why we're like, you know, living our lives now the best we can, but we're planning for the future, right?
But, I mean, you just as much need the elevator to use this room as you do the fourth-floor room. Yeah.
An accessible stage would be really great. We thought for a long time we couldn't do it at the library that I work at, and when we finally did, it's pretty huge to be able to allow anyone to present from the stage, just like everyone else.
There are any, anything else, Len, did?
Numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, how much does it cost?
Yes.
Right, it's blank here.
Good news is, from what we, uh, projected a few months ago, we're right in line with that. So, the original construction estimate, I think it was three-hundred-ninety thousand dollars. We're actually under budget on the construction estimate, so we're, um, adding that equipment in there. We're right on budget with, with what we talked about a few months ago.
So, are you asking for?
Five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That includes all construction, all build-out costs, and all equipment costs.
It's less than generators, I guess.
We do get a bit, pretty, pretty sizable crowds up there, though, right? Like, for the cooking programs.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If it's not, if it's not its own program space, it's overflow for other programs. So, it's, it's used as much as possible, and this will just increase that. And it's less than sixty-two million.
When could construction start and when could it finish? Like, what's the?
If, if the resolution passes, we would actually start awarding contracts and start construction in Janu-, or, sorry, December and January, so.
And when would we expect it to be complete? How long would the building, the room be out?
Probably sixty days, ninety days top. So, February, we could probably start using the room.
So, in time for festival season, then?
Oh, yeah, by next summer for, for, for a big kickoff of, of, like, large programs, absolutely.
Oh, it's like you thought of this. This is fantastic.
Yeah, we have the room booked out. If the resolution passes, we're ready to start construction. The room's actually booked out for two months.
Okay, fantastic.
I mean, I make a joke about the money, but honestly, like, to spend that much and get a, like, a place where you could have all of your big programs, that you, you can, you've reached the limits with this room. Like, there's only so much you can do. But, like, you get to kind of start from scratch in a way that you can't down here. I mean, it's worth it to me.
It's the combination of being able to have an event going on and something else too, that makes this, um, really, a hundred-and-eighty people, it's not as many people as we get in our lobby events.
Right.
But it's set up. That room, there's no changing it out the way we have to do the lobby constantly for that to happen.
And Eli mentioned it. If we book the podcast room, it's a ten-by-ten room. We're giving up space for a hundred-and-twenty people when we book that space out.
I realize you're doing that. That's pretty wild.
Yeah, that is pretty. Great.
I also think this is the, the first resolution that's come to me on the board for, I mean, we've spent money downtown, because we have to spend money on downtown on things like bathrooms, but this is the first investment in terms of recognize, providing something that the community wants as opposed to they have to have, like a bathroom.
Or new carpet, or paint.
Right. We've been investing in the branches, not in downtown as much in that way. Do you, you guys agree or disagree with that assessment?
No, I agree. I think the secret lab kind of came just before we all came on the board. That was probably the last big one.
And then we had the new carpet and new paint. That was a pretty amazing.
That's true. The lobby on the first lobby.
Yeah, and I, I'm pretty sure we did some work in the bathrooms, too.
First floor.
Did a lot with the bathrooms.
Right, right.
But that's because we always talk about sewage.
This is exciting to, I mean, we still had to circle it back to something bathroom-related, um, but, uh, this is, this is, this is really exciting. It'd be really interesting to see the new events up there. All right, so I think we're, uh, thank you, Len. If there are no other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, so can I have someone read the resolution?
I'll read.
Thank you.
Okay, the board resolves, one, to approve a project budget of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the downtown library fourth-floor renovation project to be paid out of the Capital Projects Fund. Two, that all resolution and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
All right, can I, um, get a, um, I think I got right to the vote? Yes, a motion.
Um.
Motion first.
Motion first, though.
Wait, you read the motion?
She just read it, but she didn't motion.
We need, we actually need a motion.
Sorry. Oh, okay. I motioned what she just said. Is that for?
Second.
I, I still need a second.
Got it.
Second.
Create a second?
Second.
Great.
I, I have a point for discussion. Please, discuss. I, I wanted to say something that I think will be obvious. It might be a question. So, if someone would be watching this, they might ask this question and wonder, hey, how come nobody asked this question? Okay, so we spend, um, over half a million dollars after we just talked about creating a new building in this space. Um, I think we've addressed some of the reasons why there might be concerns about that, which is the value's terrific. It's needed. It's something that we have demand for. Um, are there any concerns or does anyone see that downside as having outweighing the benefits? I mean, don't we already spend half a million a year just to keep it as, as, as is? Like, right?
Well, I think the, the reserve study that you have indicated that you're going to spend ten million or more.
Right.
If you keep it just functional, as safe and open and working, and you do nothing else to it. So, I think, you know, the question's a real question. It's a fair question. Um, but you heard how many years it will take in order to get a project, like, what was recommend, what was discussed off the ground, even to a point of discussion.
Right.
Um, years is a long time in service work, the type of work we do. And I think you have to think in terms of not dol-, not only in dollars spent, and I'm not, I'm not minimizing that, but what's the impact? How many people will be affected positively by a change in a renovation that's going to take us a couple of months to provide? Um, and that, that to me is, and that's in this year. That's in twenty-twenty.
Right.
And what's the answer to that question? And so, you are, you are balancing, um, the short term and the long term. You definitely are. I think it's a fair question, and will people say you shouldn't have done that if you thought that one day you might, um, replace the building? Um, yeah, some people will say that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, here we are, two thousand, approaching two thousand and twenty, and it's been eight, almost eight years since the bond failure. Um, so we have to think in ten, twenty-year increments, you know, the, the decision that we make tonight, well, will be like a, a nice interim move, hopefully, to see in between, you know, figuring out what else we need to do in any time, instead of waning.
Yeah, I think we have to make the best decision now, given the current context. We can't stop adding value to the library.
The benefit of this investment is huge.
And we have control. We have complete control over whether we're not, we're going to spend this five-hundred thousand dollars. And we have, like, ultimately, only so much control over the lo-long term, right? So, why not, you know, do what we can now?
Great. Anything else? Thank you for the discussion. We always do need discussion. Good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Great. Resolution passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. Uh, we have another resolution to transfer, transfer from the fund balance to Capital Projects.
This is what the auditor referenced, um, in that they recommend that we do this in the audit, in the documentation. When you read it, you'll see, um, that we did this once a year ago. We did not do this in the past year, um, and they recommend that we move the money from the fund balance, which is multiple millions, to this capital project, which is where some of the money will come from for the work that we're talking about doing.
Great. Um, can I have someone read the resolution?
You want somebody to make the motion?
Oh, yes, actually, not just read. I do need a motion. Please. I'll do it. Thank you.
You need a second?
I move that the board resolves to transfer one-point-five million dollars from the undesignated fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded. Uh, I need a second, though, too. Second. Thank you. Uh, discussion, any discussion? Great. I think we're just, we're following the auditor's recommendations. We talked, we talked about this, um, in-depth in the, um, finance committee meeting. Um, this recommendation makes perfect sense. And, uh, did you have any, anything to add from that meeting? Um, it's about accounting and how we keep track of things. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, resolution passes. Um, we've got two more to go. Resolution of thanks to Laura Pershun-Reiner upon her retirement. I think something that, or Steve Andrewbrook had.
Yes.
To pursue.
Tackle anyone else who tries to read this resolution.
I totally wanted to read it.
I'm sure everyone wanted to read it, but I am going to read it. So, I move that the board resolves that it would like to officially thank Laura Pershun-Reiner for her service as an employee from May nine, nineteen-ninety, to November fifteen, twenty-nineteen, of the Ann Arbor District Library, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Second.
I got chills.
I have some discussion.
Let's have this. Let's have this discussion.
So, I think of Laura as like a through-line from the past to the present of the library, and she is like a sunny soul of the library. Laura was my first boss of the library. Um, I cold-called Josie while I was still in college and asked her if I could have a job at the library. Not for money, like, I wanted to be an intern, and, um, she's, she amazingly agreed to take me on and gave me to Laura. And Laura agreed to babysit this intern for the summer. On the day I arrived, her, her daughter was getting her wisdom teeth out, but Laura was just still busy, like, you know, running storytime, doing what she does. Like, that's the thing about Laura. She's just always so even and calm and sunny through no matter what. Um, I'm sure you all have people that you look up to in your lives and, like, probably for one thing that they do really amazingly or another, but how many people can you think of that you look up to in every single aspect of their life? Like, that is Laura. You know, she has this amazing family. She's raised two wonderful daughters, but she was like, she's my library idol, for sure. And I know there are other people who would say that. So, I'm sure everyone has their, like, story to tell about Laura, and, like, I think if other people have memories from taking their kids to storytimes, like, it'd be great to hear others, but Laura, I mean, she will be really missed.
Well, I thank you. That was really lovely.
I can add. Um, I knew Laura before I came here, um, as the youth manager, youth department manager, because she was, we were both youth librarians. So, I knew Laura from other places, and it was something when I became the manager of the youth department, Laura was the person who stepped up to help me understand this culture, this place, and helped me navigate through. And then every, every time I was, when I was promoted from the youth department to administration, Laura talked through with me my reservations about leaving youth services, because she understood what my reservations were. She understood. And while it wasn't a decision she would have made, she understood it was a decision I should make, and for all the right reasons. And every time that's happened, I've touched back with Laura about, about the options and all the, all those things. And it's, I mean, and Laura was somebody working here, and I could still do that, and there was still the confidentiality, and there was still the trust, even though I was ultimately going to be the boss of everybody, and she could still talk to me that way. And I watched Laura over the last couple of months guide the people who were much younger than she is, who she's taught how to do what she does. I watched her help them see her retirement as a positive, normal, next step. The way she helped me understand those things I was doing were my positive, normal, next steps. So, while probably not everyone right now understo- understands the gift she gave them over the last couple of months and how she did that, one day, one day, they'll be there, and they're going to go, damn, Laura Reiner showed me how to do this. And that is Laura's value and gift to all of us, and I'm with you. I'm try, I'm, I'm managing not to do that, but I'm with you. And when we saw all the little children sitting in front of the stage, there for Laura, and they walked in the door Friday carrying bouquets to give to Laura and cards to give to Laura, and I sat with her, and she was sitting next to me, and while the staff she taught were doing so much of the storytelling and the performing amazingly, and the children were in it, totally in it, Laura had tears going down her cheeks, and I said, smile, Laura. The kids are looking at you, and they're still looking at you. They're frowning because they don't understand. Smile, Laura. You can keep crying, but smile, Laura. And she, she did, and she could. It was just amazing evening. So, Jamie, thank you for saying all of that. We do already today. No, Laura's not here. It's been a strange day, but thank you for saying that.
And we thank Laura.
Yes.
Who I hope is not sitting at home watching the library for me.
Some nice person should make her, like, just a clip of just this part.
I have just a really small story about Laura, who I don't know personally as well as you all do, but for my kids from, you know, like toddlerhood up to second-grade visits, she was the face of the library. She was the thing that they, I mean, they didn't have a special relationship with her, except I think every kid did who came to them, to those storytimes in those years. And it was, you know, I had a more complicated relationship with the library, but I think my kids just thought she was the library. And it's great to hear, I'm, I'm not at all surprised to hear that she managed things such that no kid is, I mean, kids are going to miss her, but they're going to be able to have that connection in different, through a different body.
Right.
So, I just wanted to say thank you to her for that.
Yes, thank you. Um, we, are we vote? I, I think we should just vote yes, all those in favor, yes.
Aye.
Great. Perfect. So, we have, uh, a vote for closed session for next month, um, to discuss real estate and also gather opinion of council. So, that is a roll-call vote. You need a second?
Yeah.
You need a motion? I move that we have closed session, um, on Jan-, on December sixteenth.
Second.
Thank you, Karine.
Are, are we expecting that six P M?
Uh, I think we're, we need to check with council, probably, for availability.
He can attend. And what did we tell him?
Six.
Six, okay, great.
Yes. Victoria Green? Yes. Any more? Yes.
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 Yes. Great, great. Thank you, everyone. Uh, and then the citizens' comments. So much for you to think about in these past two hours. Welcome. Please come on up, uh, introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hello, I am Scott Trudeau. Um, I don't have a ton to say. Um, I was really excited to come and hear about the feasibility study for, um, dealing with this piece of land. Um, I wanted to thank you all for, um, recognizing how much value is here and looking for a way to unlock that, not just to make the library's job easier to reinvent this space, but to look to address other really critical, um, needs and, and especially affordable housing. So, and I'm super excited about the, the potential here. Um, I think, um, shooting for, you know, what the zoning would be if this were a private parcel and really going to that maximum scale makes no sense to really try to unlock all of that value and, and, and give it back to the community. Um, uh, there was a lot said about how unusual, uh, Ann Arbor is, um, and, and doing something like this is, is unusual. There isn't really a city that's done this before. There are other housing, library branch things, but as discussed, like, nobody's done it. And I think, um, in a lot of ways, Ann Arbor isn't as unique as it thinks it is, but I think in this, this case, um, we could really, you know, take a step forward and really lead the way. Um, and that's, I think the library in particular has done an excellent job, um, at really being a leader. Um, and so, I'm looking forward to. Um, and so I'm looking forward to seeing you all take this on. Um, I, I had one question, which I think is answered just by implication.
Your attention please. The library will close in fifteen minutes. The internet stations will automatically shut off at eight fifty-five P M. Please make any final copies at this time and take all materials to be checked out to a self-check station or to the circulation desk by eight fifty-five P M. Thank you.
That doesn't cut into your three minutes.
We start the, uh, my last, my last point on that was, was on zoning. I like, I'm, I guess, I'm assuming that the city zoning laws actually apply to the library, even though it's a separate entity from the city. Yeah, okay, um, given that that came up in the discussion, because I know other, um, public entities do not have to actually follow the city zoning.
Right. We are currently public land.
Okay.
So if we chose to do something ourselves as a library only, we are not bound by some of the, um, process that others are.
Gotcha.
If we were to do something like this, then we would be there.
Right, so any public-private kind of arrangement, and you're not going to build housing on your own, right? Without doing, so that makes, that answers that question, so appreciate that. So yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see, uh, how this goes forward, um, and, and kind of where it leads. Hopefully the appetite here in the city is, um, and the people here will, will, uh, join you all in kind of making this happen. I think it's really exciting. Um, the one other thing I'll comment on is it makes me a little sad that we're potentially investing in a bunch of fossil fuel infrastructure for our branches. Uh, I, I like, I, I can think of a lot of things if they were different, it would be easier to argue against buying generators, um, and fueling them with fossil fuels. But batteries are expensive, microgrids aren't really allowed, um, community solar isn't there yet. I'm hoping the schools with their new, uh, sustainability initiatives will kind of be creative, uh, in leading the way to help us figure out how these public institutions can be more sustainable with renewable energy, um, and not with fossil fuel infrastructure. But I also understand the realities of where the library is now, but twenty years of more fossil fuels doesn't make me feel great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi. Um, so just as I'm side, Josie, I missed your director's report. And that's normally one of my favorite parts of the meeting, so I'm sad for that. Normally doesn't happen so early in the meeting. But, uh, aside from that, uh, this meeting was a, like, my reflection on it was, it's a really good meeting. Uh, and I appreciate, um, forgot your name. No. Scott, I appreciate everything Scott said and, uh.
Lynn is also important.
But now I'll just move to my comment, the original comment. Um, so, uh, I noticed on the library programs that it says extended weekend hours at Westgate. But it's kind of an aside in italics. And I was talking with somebody and they didn't even know that it was open longer. And on the program, it doesn't say how long it's open. I don't know if that's intentional or not, but since the programs are coming out monthly now, it would probably make sense to say, hey, Westgate's open till eight on weekends. Aside from that, I'm just going to plug the board meeting should also be in the printed program thing that I've plugged a bit, but, yeah.
Just, just for you to know, the library's hours at Westgate match Sweetwater's. That helps you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Karen for saying my name right, I appreciate it. I do put rhymes with seesaw on the card. Hi, my name is Jess Lita, I'm a renter on Ann Arbor's west side. Uh, I wear a lot of hats in the community, but I don't have any of them on tonight. I'm just here as a fan of buildings, um, the way they look and how they act for us. Uh, I have, all of the things I have to say are about the prospective new downtown branch. First of all, I had the opportunity to visit with the architectural team, a couple of weeks ago, who designed the, um, library slash housing project that you guys, uh, reviewed tonight. It was really fun to talk to the team, but even more than that, they talked about where it's going. Um, that was a prototype project, they really kind of designed it as an experiment, um, and the city wanted to see how it went. Uh, the city was so happy with the results, that there are six more in the pipeline, um, either being designed or developed right now. Um, so this may be new, but that doesn't mean that there's not a lot of energy behind it. I also wanted to say that I hope for an outreach process that is as thoughtful, as diverse, and as inclusive as the library itself. Community engagement is a really hard thing to do, and there's no really right way to do it. Um, but I'm just excited to see the library leading the way in community education and, and asking, um, in a way that's challenging to do. So I'm excited for that. I also wanted to say, when it comes to this being a unique project in Michigan and even nationally, Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County are already leaders. We're eightieth out of eighty-three in terms of income inequality in Michigan. We're the eighth most economically segregated community in the country. And we're the most expensive rental market in Michigan. We're already leaders. I'm delighted to see that the library is helping us be a leader out of these issues. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget anything important. And helping us address our community issues as well as our community opportunities through the library. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to say is that I'm delighted to see that being inspirational is one of the new branch's goals. Um, and that I hope that that applies to the eventual design, um, as well as its function as well, to have, um, an amazing building, as well as a building that functions amazingly for the people who live here or the people who could. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brilliant. Uh, any, any last minute folks who would like to sign up? Last words for the evening? All right, well, thank you, uh, we are adjourned, thank you for joining us. All right, good job everyone, awesome meeting. Went beyond the, uh, closing.
But we're not beyond the closing.